Good evening. Welcome to the regular meeting of the Livonia Public Schools Board of Education, July 20th, 2015. If you're joining us just now, we have a series of meetings this evening. This is our regular meeting, or as some refer to it as a voting meeting. The items that come before us tonight typically have been before the board, on average, at least twice before they're voted on tonight. So you may not see the level of conversation that you might expect before we vote on an item. That's because it's been discussed at length at least twice before you see it right now. If you're looking to see a whole lot more conversation on the items that come before the board, I suggest that you follow the committee of the whole meetings. Those are, that calendar of those meetings can also be found on our website at livoniapublicschools.org. If you hover over the Board tab and drop down to our meetings, you can get the complete list of all those meeting dates. But if you're looking for more conversation, that's where I recommend that you tune in. Mrs. Bonnefield, will you please take the role for us this evening?
Mr. Centers.
Here.
Mrs. Jarvis.
Here.
Mr. Johnson.
Here.
Mrs. Laura.
Here.
Mrs. McDonald.
Here.
Mrs. Bonnefield is here. President Burton.
Here.
We have a quorum.
Thank you. If you'd like to follow along with our agendas this evening, there are agendas just outside the door. They're either on a table or on the counter, just in the back there. If you're at home and you'd like to follow along, again, go to our website at www.livoniapublicschools.org. If you hover over the Board tab, Board tab, and drop down to agendas, you can follow along with the agenda there also. Mrs. Bonnefield, will you please lead us in a pledge of allegiance tonight?
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
The next item on our agenda is Item 3, Communications. I'd like to give an update on the superintendent search. As you're probably aware, Dr. Leepo was recently selected as the superintendent of Wayne County RISA. And as much as we are absolutely thrilled for him, and thrilled for our school district in our county to have his leadership, it does leave an enormous hole that we need to fill. The board takes this responsibility very, very seriously, and I'd like to give you an update right now on where we are. The board decided several weeks back that we would utilize a search firm for this very important role. We interviewed six different firms, all that were very, very capable, left us with a difficult decision, but we definitely hired, made a decision and hired Michigan Leadership Institute. We will have three gentlemen who will be working on our team for this search. They are Mike Wilmot, Bill Weber, and Tim Quinn. We've, the board has met with Mike and Bill. We have developed a calendar that will take us through this process. We are, at this point, having focus groups meet with Michigan Leadership Institute gentlemen in order to develop a profile of the superintendent that we are looking for. We have tomorrow a number of focus groups that are meeting with folks from MLI, or Michigan Leadership Institute. They cover staff, some parent groups, some community groups, many, many different groups all day long will be, will be meeting with Michigan Leadership Institute. There's also going to be open staff and open community forums for anybody who would like to come and share their thoughts on what we should be looking for in a superintendent with the folks from Michigan Leadership Institute. Board members will very intentionally not be present at these meetings because we want everyone to feel very free to share whatever their thoughts are, and we don't want to encumber them in any way. Everything that is shared with MLI will be brought back to the board, but obviously we won't know exactly who is saying what, but we want everyone to have as free a time to share as they can. If you cannot make it, I'm sorry, the open committee, open community meetings are next Tuesday, July 28th. For staff, they are at 4:30. For the community, it is 6 o'clock. Those forum meetings will be held at this board office downstairs here with the gentleman from MLI. If you'd like to attend, please do so. We'd love to hear from as many people as possible. If that does not work, if that date does not work out well for you, there will be shortly a button on our website called "Talk to Us." If you'd like to click that button, you can tell us whatever you'd like to tell us in terms of what you think we should be looking for in a superintendent. The other way that you can communicate with us is you can contact the board members directly. If either of those ways are not convenient for you, please do. Reach out to us, let us know your thoughts, let us know what you think we should be looking for in a superintendent. This profile is going to be very, very important as we go forward in this very, in this very important position. The job has been posted already. There, I understand that there's a lot of interest in it, which I'm not surprised. Livonia Public Schools has been a lighthouse district for some decades now, and that continues. I'm thrilled to hear that, and we're very much looking forward to seeing the applicants for this position. The applications are due August 28th to MLI. The month of September will be devoted to interviewing and the follow-up process for that, for those interviews, and we hope to have a new superintendent seated during the month of October. If we at any point find that we are not getting the quality of applicants that we are looking for, we will go back and halt that search for a couple of months, reopen those applications, and look again, because this board is absolutely devoted to hiring a very highly qualified superintendent to lead our school district. We are working on this weekly. There may not be board activity on it on a given week. That's because there is applicant activity or search firm activity going on at that time, but this is absolutely a very, very high priority to us, and we do have high confidence that we will have a wonderful, very qualified superintendent to lead our district shortly. Stay tuned, and we'll keep you informed. Do any other board members on Item 3A have written communications they'd like to share with the board? No? At this time, we have Audience Communications. Audience Communications is a time that the board sets aside to listen to the community. It is not a time where we engage in questions and answers. It's a time that we simply listen to the community and have, and listen to what they'd like to share with us. We do have a limit of three minutes per person, and that is so that everybody who wishes to speak to the board can do so and can have a fair amount of time to do that. I do have one blue slip, and that is from Mrs. Jody White. Mrs. White, if you'd like to approach the board. If anybody else in the audience would like to approach the board, if you could let me hear the blue slip, I'll make sure that I get you called.
Everybody kind of knows me, Jody White. I'm not getting answers, I'm checking the box. I have some concerns, one of them with my superintendent that's leaving, that he's leaving some things on the plate for the new superintendent, and one of them is how things are being written in the student handbook by our elected school board, and then they're not the same follow-through. And I have, I have a couple of police reports that came about in January of this year in our school district, and I'm not seeing any follow-through with it. And I'm really sorry, but I told them I'm going to keep coming back here until I get it. I noticed on March 30th, in 2015, we've actually changed the bullying policy to read, "To the extent permitted by law, documents comprising the investigation will be maintained in a secure manner, will not be commingled with other documents, and will not be disclosed only, will be disclosed only in accordance with law or on a need-to-know basis." And I'm on a need-to-know basis. I have a teacher that was suspended because of paid-for lockers. We don't pay for lockers, we have a lock deposit. Money that would be returned to the students might be returned, and all the money's returned. It's called a deposit. I was a new monitor, and I have John Raymond saying that I harassed children. I didn't harass children. I have been asking many times for the video because it'll match the incident report that Mr. Winery has. So I would like to know when the need-to-know happens. I have been talking with Mr. Winery and John Raymond, and I'm seeing more and more stuff that's going on that just doesn't seem to line up. And I said last time, I'm not here to sue, I'm here to make sure that the superintendents, whoever come in here, read the paperwork, because that's what we parents are doing as new parents, and I don't like what's happening. You know, someone's discriminating against this teacher and saying things, and no one's saying the other side of the story. It's over a lock, a lock deposit, and embezzling, or is it because she put $300 of her own money into it? So I'm investigating these police reports that I'm obtaining because I don't like how I'm being treated as a citizen, taxpayer, mom, and the fact that I don't want our school district being sued, and you don't have a separate rate, separation agreement with me, so I'm not having my hands coughed saying that I can't talk about this. So I would like to get to the bottom of this with my school board, and the attorney I've asked, I've sent you guys a couple of emails, and I don't hear from you. So I'll be back again, and I don't know when to expect something in writing from you, but just saying, "See, Mr. Winery," is not going to work, because he's the one that I've been asking for stuff with for a while, and I have it all in documentation, and I'll be more than happy to sit down with anybody, it's about that thick, so, all the emails that we've had, so, okay, thank you.
I will just make one factual correction. There has been communication from the district to Mrs. White regarding this issue, so if the public is wondering if there has been issue, communication, as Mrs. White said, there has been, it's a thick stack of documentation of communication. Is there anybody else in the audience who would like to approach the board at this time? If I could have your blue slip, that would be great, then we'll have a record of your attendance tonight. Thank you. And we have Mrs. Kim Ballhorn.
Yeah. I'm here in regards to, I'm not exactly sure, so I just got here where you're on the agenda, but I kind of want to reserve my consent end because it's in regards to the Washington site, and I see on your agenda you have the update and sale of property proposals. So in regards to, I'm not sure if that's including in regard of the Washington Elementary site, if not, if that's part of the, what you're going to be talking about tonight or not.
That will, but we do have Audience Communication reserved at the beginning of the meeting. So if you'd like to go ahead and share whatever comments you'd like, you can do so now, and we have three minutes per person to share whatever you'd like.
Okay, well, I'd just like to know exactly what is going on, because I see a lot of movement there, like right now there's dump trucks and everything. So I'd like to understand, because there's neighbors that want to know what's going on with that, when it will be, I guess, closed down, is it going to be, exactly what's going to happen to that site, at the, what time, who's going to have it, and everything that, because that pertains to the people. So we'd like to know, because there's, you know, there's football that's going to be starting on that pretty soon, and I'd just like to know what's going on with that site.
Okay. And as you notice, it is on the agenda for later this evening, so if you can stay in our audience and listen, or you can listen from home, whatever's most convenient for you, but we will have an update on it this evening.
Okay, and then also in regards to it, because I believe that the other thing is that whatever you do with the site, I understand that you're supposed to have a meeting or something with the neighbors to let them know, so I just want to make sure that whatever you decide that we will have something, and then I also can help you reach out to the neighbors to get participation for a day if you have time, so I can, okay.
If you, here, if you could hand your contact information in terms of email perhaps to Mrs. Wasnick at the end of our table, we can make sure that she can communicate with you. Dr. Leepo, would you like to address this?
Yes, I just would add that no decisions have been made on the property, yet the board's still looking at its options, and certainly as part of that process as they're moving forward, as they start to make decisions. We did make the commitment to go and spend some time with the community with our real estate consultant, and that is on our agenda to do. So those things will be coming up over the next several weeks and months.
Okay. And one other comment, and I understand that you have changed the zoning for that to residential, that I understand?
We can't do that.
Okay, so then I was under, for some reason I thought there was rezoned residential, which I was going to say the residents were happy about that, but since it's not, well, we're back at square one again, I guess.
The long process.
Yes, I understand that, I'm just trying to get an update in regards to that.
And hopefully we can answer at least some of your questions.
That's fine.
A little bit later in the meeting. Thank you very much.
Thank you.
Is there anybody else in the audience who would like to approach the board at this time? All righty. Seeing none, we will go on to our next item on our agenda. We have no response to prior Audience Communications, other than what I've already shared with you. The next item on the agenda is Item 4, Consent Agenda. May I have a motion, please?
President Burton.
Mrs. Bonne, I'm sorry, Mrs. Jarvis.
Move that the Board of Education of the Livonia Public Schools School District approve the following Consent Agenda items as recommended by the superintendent. Item 5A, minutes of the regular meeting of June 22nd, 2015. 5B, minutes of the special meeting of June 22nd, 2015. Item 5C, minutes of the closed session of June 22nd, 2015. 5D, minutes of the special meeting of July 6th, 2015. 5E, minutes of the special meeting of July 8th, 2015. 5F, minutes of the special meeting of July 9th, 2015. And 6A, bills for payment, July 21st, 2015.
Support.
We have a motion from Mrs. Jarvis, supported by Mr. Johnson. Are there any questions or comments from the board? Seeing none, Mrs. Bonnefield, will you please take the role?
Mrs. Jarvis?
Yes.
Mr. Johnson?
Yes.
Mr. Centers?
Yes.
Mrs. Laura?
Yes.
Mrs. McDonald?
Yes.
Mrs. Bonnefield says yes. President Burton?
Yes.
Motion carries.
Thank you. The next, I, yes, I'm sorry, yes, can everyone please pass down their minutes of the closed session? The next item on our agenda is Item 7, Personnel. 7A is the appointment of K-12 English Language Arts and Social Studies Coordinator. May I have a motion, please?
President Burton.
Mr. Johnson.
Move that the Board of Education of the Livonia Public Schools School District accept the recommendation of the superintendent and appoint Christine Finkel as K-12 English Language Arts Social Studies Coordinator, beginning with the 2015-2016 school year.
Support.
We have a motion by Mr. Johnson, supported by Mrs. Jarvis. And Dr. Leepo, would you like to address this item?
Yes, we're very pleased to bring forward the recommendation tonight. As we reestablish coordinator positions, which are administrative positions in our school district to provide support in our, in our Academic Services Department, and with the English Language Arts Social Studies Coordinator, we have a very qualified candidate to bring forward to you, Ms. Christine Finkel. And Ms. Finkel has been with our school district for many years. She has a bachelor's degree from Iowa University, which, you know, we typically go for Michigan people, but that's okay. She had a lot of other stuff going for her, including a master's degree from Michigan State University. She's also working on her specialist degree at Eastern Michigan University, and if I started to talk about all of the things that Christine's done in our school district to support English Language Arts and Social Studies over the past many years, we'd probably be here for about an hour. She has a remarkable resume. She currently holds a position of Elementary Literacy Facilitator in our Curriculum Department, and is well-respected across our school district, and provides remarkable support to our, to our teachers. She's going to be a great asset for our school district, continue to be a great asset, and we're very, very pleased to bring this recommendation forward to you, among many, many strong candidates.
Thank you. Are there questions or comments from the board? Seeing none, we have a motion by Mr. Johnson, supported by Mrs. Jarvis. Mrs. Bonnefield, will you take the role, please?
Mr. Johnson?
Yes.
Mrs. Jarvis?
Yes.
Mr. Centers?
Yes.
Mrs. Laura?
Yes.
Mrs. McDonald?
Yes.
Mrs. Bonnefield says yes. President Burton?
Yes.
Motion carries.
Thank you, and congratulations, Mrs. Finkel. We're thrilled to have you in your new position. Would you like to come to the podium and share a few words with us?
Good. I'd just like to thank the board for the opportunity to serve Livonia Public Schools as the Curriculum Coordinator for English Language Arts and Social Studies. I'd also like to acknowledge my husband of 31 years is here tonight. He's been a great supporter to me throughout my career, and as I've been continuing my education. I've been serving the district for 25 years now. You're very kind to say many years.
You can put the number.
But 25 years, 25 years, and it's, it's really been something that's, that's continued to be more and more interesting. I never would have thought, years ago, as a young teacher, that I would eventually become an administrator, but I've had, throughout my 25 years, the opportunity to work with inspiring colleagues at Webster Elementary, Hoover Elementary, in the Academic Service Department, and then in the last six years, I've served on many committees and become familiar with people and faces throughout the district. So I've really grown through that opportunity. I've also been inspired by the leadership here in Livonia, both at the school and at the district level, and have had the opportunity to be mentored by the administrators that I've worked for, who have really given their time generously in counseling me, advising me, and nurturing me to become the educator that I am today. So it is really through the opportunity to grow has, has come about as a part of spending time in the company of many, many inspiring educators. It's my privilege and honor to accept this position as Curriculum Coordinator, Administrator, and as a member of the Academic Services Team. So thank you very much.
Thank you. Congratulations. We have another exciting item on our agenda tonight. The next item is Item 7B, Appointment of a K-12 Math/Science Coordinator. May I have a motion, please?
President Burton.
Mrs. McDonald.
Move that the Board of Education of the Livonia Public Schools School District accept the recommendation of the superintendent and appoint Benjamin Hilliard as a K-12 Math/Science Coordinator, beginning with the 2015-16 school year.
Support.
We have a motion by Mrs. McDonald, supported by Mrs. Laura. Dr. Leepo.
Again, we're very pleased to bring this recommendation forward. Ben stood out among many, many strong candidates for this particular position. He has a bachelor's degree from Eastern Michigan in science, and his master's degree from the University of Michigan is in math, and so he brings a great background to the job. He's also working on his specialist degree through Eastern Michigan University right now. He's currently an ACAT teacher, and he's absolutely brilliant. Blew everybody away in the interviews, and has been an outstanding teacher for us. Certainly is in the very unique position to beat all of these remarkable candidates out for this particular job, and only be the second-best Livonia elementary teacher in the family, because his wife is a remarkable teacher over at Randolph Elementary, and so even though he's second in the family in our pecking order, he's first for this particular job, we think he's going to do a phenomenal job, and we're very, very excited to have him onboard.
Terrific, thank you. Are there any other comments from the board? Nope? All righty. We have a motion from Mrs. McDonald, supported by Mrs. Laura. Mrs. Bonnefield, will you please take the role?
Mrs. McDonald?
Yes.
Mrs. Laura?
Yes.
Mr. Centers?
Yes.
Mrs. Jarvis?
Yes.
Mr. Johnson?
Yes.
Mrs. Bonnefield says yes. President Burton?
Yes.
Motion carries.
Thank you. Congratulations to Mr. Hilliard, and would you like to come on up and say a few words with us?
I too would like to thank the board and everyone involved in this election process for this role. I'm very excited to begin this new position and to work with Christine. I think it's going to be exciting. It's hard to leave a building that I loved so much, like Webster, and to come out of the classroom, but I'm ready for a new challenge and really excited about this. And I'd like to thank my family, like Dr. Leepo said, I am only the second-best teacher in our household, but I do my best, and I can learn from my wife, and keep growing, and we help each other out. So, thank you, and I'm excited to get going.
Thank you very much, and congratulations. Congratulations again to Mrs. Finkel and to Mr. Hilliard. It's been an enormously long interview process for the entire administrative team. Over 50 interviews have been conducted, to my knowledge, just in this month alone, over the, for the various positions that are, that are up in Livonia Public Schools right now. So we'd like to also, as a board, thank very much the administrative team that's been diligent about getting these positions hired, filled, and hired, and hired with such qualified, capable people. So thank you to our administrative team also. The next item on our agenda is Item 7C, Approval of Settlement Agreement with AFSCME. May I have a motion, please?
President Burton.
Mrs. Bonnefield.
Move that the Board of Education of the Livonia Public Schools School District approve the terms of the tentative agreement reached with AFSCME Local 118 to amend the collective bargaining agreement between the parties effective July 1, 2015.
We have a motion by Mrs. Bonnefield, supported by Mr. Centers. Dr. Leepo, would you like to address this?
Yes, actually, I'll address both 7C and 7D at the same point in time. We have two settlement agreements for you. If you recall, with these two organizations, AFSCME and our LSA, that's our support staff for transportation, food service, nighttime custodial staff, and other skilled trades and other positions in our school districts through AFSCME, and also our Secretarial Union, they were open for salary for this upcoming year. There are certain concessions in their contract that remain in place and will with this, with these contract settlements for next year, along with a salary freeze. And so we're comfortable that it meets the requirements that we had outlined for the Board of Education with our parameters for next year and our continued difficult budgetary times. And again, I just want to take the opportunity, as we have in the past, to recognize our employees and the sacrifice that they continue, and the great working relationships that we continue to maintain through the most difficult of times. We're very appreciative that they're working with us. We're very proud that we have not privatized these, these positions, and yet at the same point in time, to make this all work, they've worked with us to allow us to be in a position not had, not to do that because of their sacrifice. So these are very, very important positions in our school district. They do tremendous work every day, every single day with our staff and with our kids, and we appreciate the fact that they worked with us to come up with these settlements. I also just want to take a second to recognize Dana Winery, who, on top of helping the board with the superintendent search, and on top of placing or finalizing the process and organizing the process of hiring over 10 administrators over the last couple of weeks, has also been working on collective bargaining, and so there's no rest in Dana's summer, for sure, and he's, he's done a great job, and we really appreciate what he's done to bring these settlements to the board.
Thank you. Are there any other questions or comments from the board? We have a motion from Mrs. Bonnefield that's supported by Mr. Centers. Mrs. Bonnefield, will you take the role, please?
Mrs. Bonnefield says yes. Mr. Centers?
Yes.
Mrs. Jarvis?
Yes.
Mr. Johnson?
Yes.
Mrs. Laura?
Yes.
Mrs. McDonald?
Yes.
President Burton?
Yes.
Motion carries.
Thank you. The next item on our agenda is Item 7D, Approval of Settlement Agreement with LSA. May I have a motion, please?
President Burton.
Mrs. Laura.
Thank you. Move that the Board of Education of the Livonia Public Schools School District approve the terms of the tentative agreement reached by the Livonia Secretarial Association to amend the collective bargaining agreement between the parties effective July 1, 2015.
Support.
We have a motion from Mrs. Laura, supported by Mrs. McDonald, I believe, was it Mrs. McDonald?
Correct.
Okay. Dr. Leepo, is there anything else you wanted to add?
No.
Or covered on both? Alrighty.
Thank you.
Are there any other questions or comments from the board? All right. Seeing none, we have a motion by Mrs. Laura, supported by Mrs. McDonnell. Mrs. Bonnefield, will you take the role, please?
Mrs. Laura.
Yes.
Mrs. McDonnell.
Yes.
Mrs... Mr. Centers.
Yes.
Mrs. Jarvis.
Yes.
Mr. Johnson.
Yes.
Mrs. Bonnefield says yes. President Burton.
Yes.
Motion carries.
Thank you. And as Dr. Leepa said, I'd like to just echo on behalf of the Board of Education, our appreciation for our employee group. It's been a rough decade to work in education, and it's very, very appreciated that we are all working together as a team to survive this. Thank you very much. The next item on our agenda is Item 7E, Appointment of an Interim Superintendent. I'm going to go ahead and make that motion. Moved that the Board of Education of the Livonia Public Schools School District appoint Andrea Oquist to serve as its Superintendent in the interim, beginning August 3, 2015. The Board of Education is in the process of hiring a permanent replacement for the Superintendent position, vacated as of August 3, 2015, and this interim position will remain in effect until the start date for the permanent replacement.
Support.
We have a motion by Colleen Burton, supported by Mrs. Bonnefield. Just as a brief overview for folks, again, if you were around just a few minutes ago for the overview of the Superintendent search, August 3 is the date that Dr. Leepa begins his new position at Wayne Risa. October is the time period that we would like to have a new Superintendent seated at Livonia Public Schools. Therefore, we are in need of an interim Superintendent. Thinking about either an internal or an external candidate, it makes a lot of sense to have an internal candidate for this short period of time. We need someone who's going to be able to step right into the office, and while the person may not understand every bit of the minute of Dr. Leepa's day, certainly understands Livonia Public Schools, the administrative responsibilities, and the cabinet responsibilities of this district. We need someone who's going to be able to be up to speed as quickly as possible. In addition, it will save the district money to not have to go out and hire an additional person for that interim period of time. Andrea Oquist lives in the community, has been in the district for a number of years as a teacher, as a building administrator, as a cabinet member. She has made it known that she is not a candidate for the permanent Superintendent position, and that she is okay with me publicly stating that on her behalf. But we are thrilled that she is willing to serve as an interim Superintendent at this time. Are there any questions or comments from the board on this motion? Mrs. Bonnefield.
Thank you, President Burton. I would just like to say that I've known Mrs. Oquist for the past 12 years. She started with us at Taylor when my youngest... or my oldest son went into kindergarten, she moved with us to Hoover, and now I get to work with her on the board. And I am pleased and honored that she's going to be able to lead us for the next couple of months. And I know the district is in fantastic hands.
Thank you. Any other comments? Mr. Centers.
I would just like to echo the sentiments of Mrs. Bonnefield. Mrs. Oquist is a consummate professional. She is someone that is greatly admired in the community. Teachers, parents, the community members as a whole, have just outstanding things to say about her. She is going to... Those are big shoes Dr. Leepa's leaving, but I imagine she'll fill them, even though it's a short period, pretty well. So I definitely support having her as our interim Superintendent. It's going to be very nice to have you in the big chair at the table.
Thank you. Are there any other comments or questions from the board? Mrs. Laura.
Thank you. I've known Mrs. Oquist for probably over 20 years, when we both were principals together. And we couldn't ask for anyone better to help us out. Thank you, Andrea. We're behind you, and we know that you'll do a fantastic job.
Thank you. Are there any other comments from the board? Alrighty. I'd also like to thank our entire cabinet. We had a pool of phenomenal folks who are willing to serve this district in any way possible. That includes, not only as an interim Superintendent, but also as picking up the pieces for when one member of cabinet is then doing two roles, as has been the history for a number of years now. Fewer administrators are doing more work, and it's going to hit the cabinet hard over the next couple of months. And it's very appreciated what you folks are willing to face and to handle and do it with pride. Thank you very much. We have a motion by Mrs. Burton, supported by Mrs. Bonnefield. Mrs. Bonnefield, will you take the role, please?
Mrs... President Burton.
Yes.
Mrs. Bonnefield says yes. Mr. Centers.
Yes.
Mrs. Jarvis.
Yes.
Mr. Johnson.
Yes.
Mrs. Laura.
Yes.
Mrs. McDonnell.
Yes.
Motion carries.
Congratulations, and thank you. We appreciate it so much. The next item on our agenda is Item 7F, Approval of Teacher. May I have a motion, please?
President Burton.
Mr. Centers.
Moved that the Board of Education of the Livonia Public Schools School District accept the recommendation of the Superintendent and offer employment to the teacher listed on the attached document.
Support.
We have a motion by Mr. Centers, supported by Mrs. McDonnell. And Mr. Winery, would you like to address this item for us?
Certainly. Tonight, we have one teacher, specifically Mr. Greg Osaski. Mr. Osaski will be the new Career Technical at the Career Technical Center. He'll be our new automotive technology teacher. We're very lucky, I think, to have him. These teachers are not able... are not easy to find in this field. He comes highly regarded and recommended from the Farmington School District.
Terrific. Looks like their loss is our gain. Alrighty. Are there questions or comments from the board? Nope. Alrighty. We have a motion by Mr. Centers, supported by Mrs. McDonnell. Mrs. Bonnefield, will you please take the role?
Mr. Centers.
Yes.
Mrs. McDonnell.
Yes.
Mrs. Jarvis.
Yes.
Mr. Johnson.
Yes.
Mrs. Laura.
Yes.
Mrs. Bonnefield says yes. President Burton.
Yes.
Motion carries.
Thank you. The next item on our agenda is Item 7G, Removal of Teacher from Recall List. May I have a motion, please?
President Burton.
Mrs. Jarvis.
Moved that the Board of Education of the Livonia Public Schools School District remove the following teachers from any form of a recall list, thereby eliminating him or her from any rights to future employment. Kelly Grozitsky, Katrina Decline, Laura Durda, Philip Douglas, Kristen Lee, and Joshua Skodak.
Support.
We have a motion by Mrs. Jarvis, supported by Mrs. McDonnell. Mr. Winery, would you like to address this item for us?
Yes, thank you. Under a provision in the collective bargaining agreement with the Livonia Educational Association, employees on layoff lose their seniority after a given period of time on layoff equal to their seniority at the time they were laid off, up to five years. And these individuals would fall under that category. They've either reached their five years or their length of seniority at the time that they were placed on layoff. So with that, in compliance with our bargaining agreement, we recommend that you adopt the motion.
Thank you. Are there any questions or comments from the board? Seeing none, we have a motion for Mrs. Jarvis, supported by Mrs. McDonnell. And Mrs. Bonnefield, will you please take the role?
Mrs. Jarvis.
Yes.
Mrs. McDonnell.
Yes.
Mr. Centers.
Yes.
Mr. Johnson.
Yes.
Mrs. Laura.
Yes.
Mrs. Bonnefield says yes. President Burton.
Yes.
Motion carries.
Thank you. Next item is Item 7H, Leave of Absence. May I have a motion, please?
President Burton.
Mr. Johnson.
Moved that the Board of Education of the Livonia Public Schools School District accept the recommendation of the Superintendent and approve the request for a leave of absence as listed below. Lori Morgan, 2015-2016 school year.
Support.
We have a motion by Mr. Johnson, supported by Mr. Centers. And Mr. Winery, would you like to address this item?
This employee qualifies under our labor agreement to request and be granted a leave of absence, and she's requested it for the coming year. And we recommend that the board grant that leave.
Thank you. Are there any questions or comments from the board? Seeing none, we have a motion by Mr. Johnson, supported by Mr. Centers. Mrs. Bonnefield, will you take the role, please?
Mr. Johnson.
Yes.
Mr. Centers.
Yes.
Mrs. Jarvis.
Yes.
Mrs. Laura.
Yes.
Mrs. McDonnell.
Yes.
Mrs. Bonnefield says yes. President Burton.
Yes.
Motion carries.
Thank you. The next item on our agenda is 7I, Resignations, and that is for information purposes only. That's not an item that the board votes on. The next item is 7J, Retirements. May I have a motion, please?
President Burton.
Mrs. McDonnell.
Moved that the Board of Education of Livonia Public Schools School District adopt the attached resolutions of appreciation for services rendered by Bonnie Buggno, Timothy Cahalan, Stephen Kovach, Cynthia McConkey, Mary Sullivan, Judith Tomasi, Christine Walzik.
Support.
We have a motion by Mrs. McDonnell, supported by Mrs. Bonnefield. Mr. Winery, would you like to address this item?
Thank you. These seven years have a combined total of service to the district of 144 years. That is remarkable. The district truly appreciates their service and their contributions over those years. And accordingly, we've submitted resolutions of appreciation for all of these employees, and we ask that you adopt those resolutions.
Thank you. Are there any questions or comments from the board?
Congratulations.
Yes, congratulations. Yes. And thank you so much for your service. There are folks in a variety of positions that are reflected in this list. And as we all know, it's not just teachers or just a principal that make this whole district run, but it's administrators, it's bus drivers, it's custodians, it's secretaries, it's everybody who pitches in from the time we pick up a child in the morning till the time we drop them off. So thank you so much for your years of service to all these employees. We have a motion by Mrs. McDonnell, supported by Mrs. Bonnefield. Mrs. Bonnefield, will you take the role, please?
Mrs. McDonnell.
Yes.
Mrs. Bonnefield says yes. Mr. Centers.
Yes.
Mrs. Jarvis.
Yes.
Mr. Johnson.
Yes.
Mrs. Laura.
Yes.
President Burton.
Yes.
Motion carries.
Thank you. The next item is 7K, Sympathy Resolution. May I have a motion, please?
President Burton.
Mrs. Bonnefield.
Moved that the Board of Education of the Livonia Public Schools School District adopt the attached sympathy resolution for the family of Lori Burkhill.
Support.
And I believe you'd like me to read the resolution.
Yes, thank you.
Whereas the Board of Education was saddened to hear of the untimely death of Lori Burkhill, and whereas she was employed by the Livonia Public Schools School District as a teacher at Churchill High School, Franklin High School, Student Services, Cooper Elementary School, Emerson Middle School, and Holmes Middle School from August 1995 to June 2015, and whereas she consistently demonstrated her outstanding dedication to students, parents, and staff, and whereas Lori Burkhill will be profoundly missed by her colleagues and the community, now therefore be it resolved that the Board of Education of the Livonia Public Schools School District offers its deepest sympathy to the family and friends of Lori Burkhill.
Thank you. Mr. Winery, is there anything you'd like to add?
I would like to just add that Lori worked for us a good 20 years. She had a lengthy illness, and during that time, we got to know her family. And we want to offer, on behalf of staff here, sympathy to her family and gratitude for sharing Lori with us all these years. And let you know that we will present a copy of this to the family as well.
Thank you. Are there any other questions or comments from the board? And again, we wish to extend our sympathies to the family of Lori Burkhill. We have a motion by Mrs. Bonnefield, supported by Mr. Centers. Mrs. Bonnefield, will you please take the role?
Mrs. Bonnefield says yes. Mr. Centers.
Yes.
Mrs. Jarvis.
Yes.
Mr. Johnson.
Yes.
Mrs. Laura.
Yes.
Mrs. McDonnell.
Yes.
President Burton.
Yes.
Motion carries.
Thank you. The next item on our agenda is Item 8, Reports from the Superintendent. Dr. Leepa.
Yes.
That's still you.
That's still me. Thank you very much, President Burton. It's been a busy summer for us so far, but things have really come along well as we plan for the next school year. As you know, we've been doing a significant amount of hiring. And between this week with the two appointments tonight and next week with the appointments of Assistant Principals and one more Coordinator position, we will have our entire administrative team hired and ready to go for the next school year. So it has been a lot of work. Steve Archibald mentioned to me last week that he had been in over 50 interviews in the last three weeks. And so it's been quite a haul, but we've hauled in a lot of really good people, and we're excited to have them a part of our administrative team. So it's been certainly keeping us out of trouble. And for those of you driving by any of the schools, with bond work going on, we'll see a whole lot of activity going on. The buildings are completely ripped up right now and torn apart, and we're on schedule, moving ahead, to have those schools done for the start of the school year. But a lot of, obviously, day-to-day things going on in those facilities as we prepare for next year. And of course, Lisa and the staff are very busy making sure that everything that needs to happen is happening in those schools, along with just the normal cleaning crew type of work that we're doing across the school district, the moving of programs that we have going on at Perrinville. There's a lot of things going on in the operations end. As you see with your Committee of the Whole Meeting Agenda, which comes after this meeting tonight, we've got a lot of new things that we're also bringing to the board for your consideration that hopefully we'll have approved for this summer also. And so there is a great deal going on. And certainly, what we're most pleased about is that it looks like we're going to be in great shape for the start of the school year. You're well on your way with your work with the Superintendent search process. Andrea's going to do a phenomenal job as your interim Superintendent, and you will not miss a beat. And she has an amazing group of colleagues sitting by her side that will make sure that everything goes well in our school district. So as you know, we've got, again, a Committee of the Whole Agenda that'll be coming up with a variety of things, and then we meet again next week. And between these two meetings, I think we're going to be in great shape moving into August and then the start of the school year. Thank you.
Thank you. The next item on our agenda is Item 9, Hearing from Board Members. It's been the practice of this board for some time to, rather than hearing seven thank-yous from seven different people seven times in a row, to ask one board member to take care of the majority of that for us. And then if others would like to add anything, they're certainly welcome to do so. Tonight, we will hear from Mr. Centers.
Thank you. I would like to first congratulate our new coordinators. We have heard fantastic things about what you are doing for our school district, and we're looking forward to seeing up close and personal here in the central office for a little bit more from you, but see new faces as well. So again, I want to congratulate Mrs. Oquist, who I'm sure will do an outstanding job and make us feel very comfortable sitting at this table for the next period of time, however long that will be, as a Superintendent. I would like to echo Dr. Leepa's sentiments about the bond. I've heard a lot of people who live close to the schools or have students attending the schools, they, you know, they're very interested. They drive by. They are excited to see the renovations. People know that they're overdue, so it's a lot of excitement. Tonight, we hired a new teacher, and we also had some retirements. So thank you for all the years of service. Unfortunately, we had someone lose us. So, you know, again, our sympathies go out to Mrs. Burkhill, its family. And the last thing I want to say is, you know, please take advantage of our community forums. Hopefully, we have a Superintendent that will be here for a number of years, like we have had with Dr. Leepa. So this is the opportunity for the public to get their... to share their voice and insight on what kind of person they want in this community, what kind of attributes. So tomorrow, and if you can't tomorrow, again, like Mrs. Burton said, there'll be a button on the website where you can share some feedback. So thank you very much, and that's all I have, Mrs. Burton.
Thank you. Is there anything else that board members would like to share this evening? Yes, reiterating what Mr. Centers said, the open public meeting is July 28, next Tuesday. We would love to have as many people come out to that as possible and share your thoughts as we build a profile for the Superintendent for the coming years. We also have one other important date coming up in our school district that we are just now beginning to publicize. August 17, from 4 o'clock until 6:30 here at the board office, we will be celebrating the service of Dr. Leepa. We invite those of us who've had the privilege of working with Dr. Leepa, those who are parents, those who are community members, those who are members of other boards in the community that he has worked on and given so much of his time to, to come out and celebrate the service that he has given to Livonia Public Schools. So it is...